Good evening and welcome to our October 7th regularly scheduled school board meeting. At this time, please rise if you're able and join me in the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge of allegiance, please remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like us to share a moment of silence for Stephanie Compton, a valued member of the Rosemont Middle School Sketching. Thank you. Okay, board members. So, thank you again for everyone who is here joining us for our school board meeting. Just our quick order of business is that we are having a little technical difficulties with our microphones. So you might see us pass our mic between ourselves today. That is just the nature of business because we roll with what we got. So Anna said it was because of solar flares. I don't know if that's, but I'll go with it. So at this time, is there a motion to approve the agenda as outlined?
Second.
Motion by Jackie and a second by Anna. All those in favor of approving the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries on a five zero vote. Next on the agenda is our recognition portion of the agenda, which is usually our favorite portion of the agenda. I would like to welcome Eagan High School Principal Polly Rikowski to the podium. Dr. Rikowski will start. Dr. Rikowski will start us out by giving an overview of the National Merit Scholarship Program and College Board National Recognition Programs. She will then introduce us to the Eagan High School students. Each of the other high school principals will follow to introduce their students, and after all students have been presented, staff would like them to gather at the far end of the hallway for a group photo. Dr. Rikowski.
Oh, good. Thank you very much. Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Bolsoni. I am, as introduced, Dr. Polly Rikowski, Eagan High School. I want to thank you for inviting us all here tonight and allowing us to have this time to represent and honor the students and families of these students at tonight's board meeting. So it's my privilege to give you this overall information about national merit so that each of us don't have to constantly repeat it. We'll get it done once. The National Merit Scholarship Program for the class of 2025 operates at all of our high schools. Scholarships are provided by the National Merit Organization itself, 280 business organizations, higher education institutions, and individual donors nationwide, all to honor scholastic champions and academic excellence. Juniors entered the National Merit Scholarship Program, a nationwide competition for scholarships and awards, by taking the preliminary scholastic aptitude test called the PSAT. And it's also the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. They take it in October of every year. In fact, it's coming up soon for this year's juniors. In April of 2024, the 50,000 highest scores nationwide were identified and high schools were notified of their high scores. Some 16,000 of those high performers were identified as semifinalists in mid-September. Those students are chosen on a state representational basis. Semifinalists have the opportunity to continue in the merit scholarship competition and advance to finalist status by meeting additional requirements. 34,000, the remaining group of high performers, have been named commended scholars based on a selection index score nationwide. Those seniors are to be congratulated as well on this high honor. In Minnesota, 288 seniors are semifinalists, representing 86 high schools. Additionally, 386 seniors are commended scholars, and they represent 119 high schools. Tonight, we are recognizing the seniors from our high schools for the National Merit Scholarship honors. We want to be sure to recognize all of the elementary and middle school educators, as well as our high school educators, and, of course, the families of these seniors. Our seniors arrive here tonight due to the support and education they have received in all of our schools and homes. I am honored to present the Eagan High School seniors, recognized as National Merit Scholars. I would invite them to come up front now, please. And I'm going to ask, if possible, that you face another test. Put yourselves in alphabetical order by your last names. You got it. I would invite the family and friends who are here with these young people tonight to also stand and be recognized. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out tonight for this. So we are going to just have them step forward when their name is announced so that they can be seen by the audience and recognized. If you'd hold your applause for the end, that would be great, and then the next school will come after us. Eva Abe. Adika. Balasabaraman. Did I get close?
Pretty close.
Oh, I even practiced. Louise Brandt. Harley Gray. Do we have Harley? Harley's not here. Sorry. Alex Wong. Mason Dietering. Elizabeth Kerr. Let's see, we're missing Carson, Param, Tucker, and Mia Warden. We have some students who could not be with us tonight, but certainly wish they could have. Sean Christensen, Harley Gray, and Neo Monvalen and Carson Raden. They are also part of this group. Congratulations. Now, we're going to do another test. You're going to follow me across and shake hands with our esteemed board and superintendent. Come with me.
Good evening, board members, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni. I am Bruce Miller, Principal of Eastview High School, and on behalf of Eastview, I would like to just take this moment to congratulate all the other National Merit Scholars from all of our district high schools tonight. This is an incredible accomplishment, born out of hard work and passion for sustained academic effort and learning from our students, that support and the support of our faculty, and we are proud of each other and for this very elite national recognition. It is my pleasure to introduce our Eastview Scholars earning National Merit Recognition this evening. Scholars, as I introduce you again, step forward to be recognized. As you can predict, our scholars are busy in lots of things, and so some of them are not available to be here tonight, but we'll start with who we do have. Ashton Abram, Emily Brewster, Max Huberty, Leighton Olaleye, Claire Rutherford, Sumana Sadanini, May Tang, Maggie Ghee, Alana Zick, and Nicholas Zilstra. Unable to be here tonight before we give them all a round of applause is Haraway Kabidi, Chloe Larson, Verinci Nandumuru, Avon Nguyen, Tara Keesh Ramakushmar, Suneed Bhattacharya, Kartik Saravanapandi, Narav Singai are those that aren't available to be here tonight. Please give these a round of applause. And finally, let's not forget the important work our role, our parents, guardians, family and friends play in the daily supportive partnership and momentum for this incredible achievement. Eastview, parents, guardians, family and friends, will you please stand to be recognized? Thank you for all of your support in everything that we do. Ashton, will you lead us across there?
Good evening, board members and Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Drew Storey, and I'm an Assistant Principal at Rosemont High School, standing in for Principal Roback tonight. I have the honor of introducing our Rosemont High School National Merit Scholars. I'm going to read all of the names. When your name is announced, please do step forward. First of all, we have Daniel Begno, Esen Ahmed, Kiara Favre, Sophie Gunyan, Isabella Huss, Matthew Leehome, Adam Ali, Emmanuel Garzong, Ebenezer Germachow, Bethlehem Cabetta, Sarah Labrere, Naomi Teklemarium, Sophie Gunyan, Sebastian Marchesi, Lily Nolan, and Brianna Metzger. Again, if we can give these fine scholars a round of applause, please. And if our wonderful families here in support of our students tonight from Rosemont, if you could also please stand and be recognized. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. My name is Lauren Hastings, and I have the honor and privilege of being the principal at the School of Environmental Studies. And I always say, we are small, but we are mighty. So I have with me, and I'm very proud to recognize, our student, Naomi Hudson. Naomi is not only excellent academically, but she's all around an awesome member of our SES community, and we're very proud to have her. Also proud of her are her grandma and her stepdad, who are here to celebrate with her tonight. So a round of applause for them as well.
Good evening, board members and Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Drew Mons, and I'm the principal at Apple Valley High School. Excited tonight to present to you Piper Trudeau. Piper is joining me here this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to recognize her and her accomplishments, as well as that of all the other students here representing Apple Valley High School in District 196. As Lauren said, equally proud of Piper are her family members back here, Ben and Sarah. Ben and Sarah, if you please wave and rise. We'd like to thank you, congratulate you folks here, and Piper. Thank you.
On the mics. There we go. Our next item under recognition, I'd like to welcome Rob Nelson, Principal at Diamond Path Elementary, and Drew Mons, Principal at Apple Valley High School, to the podium to introduce the Minnesota Society of Health and Physical Educators Teacher of the Year Award recipients.
You said, my name is Rob Nelson, the Principal at Diamond Path Elementary. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. Chair Johnson, Director, Superintendent Bolsoni. I have the honor of recognizing and introducing to you and to the crowd Mike Chamberlain. He is the Society of Health and Physical Educators Elementary Teacher of the Year. It's a long acronym. The short acronym is MINSHAPE, which is very appropriate. Mike is a leader in every way, not only in our school, but in our community itself. He is the co-creator of our Everyday Heroes theme at our building, which really was born out of the fact that he invites everyday heroes to come into our building and celebrate, and celebrate physical fitness every single year. And each week that he does that, we get two, three, four hundred heroes to children in our schools, whether they be parents, neighborhood friends, grandparents, things like that. So he really does his best to incorporate as much of the community as possible. He is a partner with our PTO, taking over our fun run, and this year, the theme was Amazing Race, which is helping kids to understand that along this journey that we call life, they find all these moments in which they can celebrate their awesomeness and how kind they are and how creative they are. And that really describes Mike himself. He's very creative. He's all of those things as well. He has secured partnerships around the state through Minnesota Wild and getting free golf gear for our students to be able to learn and enjoy a game such as golf. He's a leader within our school district. He does different PD and professional development for all of the FIAD teachers in the elementary division, as well as organizing our fifth grade track and field day every year. He creates obstacle courses throughout the year, and his most important, his instructive, his instruction is innovative. He uses clickers to see where students are at in their formative assessment, what they understand about a topic, how they're feeling about themselves. But his instruction always includes the what and the why, which is absolutely essential for our students to be able to see that in themselves. He always gives them various self-selected challenge levels and the opportunity to self-assess and reflect along the way. Because for him, it's not just about being good at sports. It's about being a lifelong person who pursues a healthy approach to life and physical fitness. So Mike Chamberlain, Minnesota Health, I say it again, MINSHAPE Elementary Teacher of the Year.
Good evening again, board members, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni. Again, Drew Mons, Principal at Apple Valley High School, and it is my pleasure to introduce to you Carla Christensen, who has been named the Minnesota Society of Health and Physical Educators, or MINSHAPE Secondary Physical Education Teacher of the Year. Carla has dedicated an incredible 32 years to teaching health and physical education in District 196, with the last 25 of those years spent at Apple Valley High School. She's not only a skilled educator, but also a passionate leader who excels in building relationships with students and colleagues alike. Carla's commitment to our school community is evident in her role as the, sorry, as the Physical Education and Health Department Leader, her 15 years of service on our building instructional leadership team, and her ongoing work to foster staff connections through leading our Sunshine Committee. Carla's influence extends well beyond the classroom. She has been a coach for over 20 years, leading teams in softball, basketball, volleyball, and golf, while also running camps and clinics that build skills and community. Her service to our students continues through organizing events like Girls and Women in Sports Leadership Conference and bringing together female athletes for a day of learning and growth. She's also a pioneer in curriculum development and has designed innovative courses such as Mind Body Connection and Cardio Dance Mix, as well as initiated unified, as well as initiating a unified PE class to promote inclusivity. Carla's work reflects her creativity, her dedication, and her vision for what physical education can achieve. It's a true honor to recognize her here today. She has a fan club in the first couple of rows of our teachers, and then also her husband John in the back here. Well, thank Carla for all of her hard work and all of her extraordinary contributions to our school, to the community, and to the field of education. Congratulations, Carla.
Excellent. Next on the agenda, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for Superintendent's recognition of students and staff.
Yeah, we're going to try to share the mic here. Thank you very much, Chair Johnson. I want to first recognize our outstanding principals and assistant principals, as this week is Principals and Assistant Principals Appreciation Week in District 196. And we have at least a few, if not more, principals present. Thank you for the important work you do for your school communities. And at this time, I would invite any principals or assistant principals who are with us this evening to stand, or at least wave, a lot of them are standing, wave and be recognized. Thank you. Later in our meeting tonight, the school board will be asked to approve a resolution designating next week as Nutrition Services Employees Appreciation Week in District 196. There are approximately 175 full and part-time employees in Nutrition Services. Each year, they serve approximately 2.5 million, I'm going to read that again, 2.5 million healthy and nutritious meals at 31 locations in our district. I want to thank each of them for the important work they do each day to keep our students well-fed and ready to learn. Are there any Nutrition Services employees here tonight? If so, they can stand and be recognized. If not, we will make sure that they hear about this later. And another recognition as well, later this evening, the board will also be asked to approve a resolution designating October 14th to the 19th as Transportation Employees Appreciation Week in District 196. We currently have 305 transportation employees who operate the largest district-owned fleet in the state, consisting of 227 vehicles. In a typical year, our drivers and chaperones travel approximately 2.9 million miles, I'll read that again, 2.9 million miles driving to transport more than 23,000 students twice each school day to and from more than 5,500 bus stops throughout the district. And if there are any transportation employees here today, you can stand and be recognized at this time. If not, we'll get this to them again later as well. Next, I want to point out that next Monday, October 14th, is Indigenous Peoples' Day, a holiday celebrated on the second Monday of October each year to honor Native American peoples, their sovereignty, culture, and gifts to North America. The day is recognized by students and staff in our district and in schools across the state of Minnesota. In District 196, our elementary students participate in a school-wide read-aloud and discussion of the book Indigenous Peoples' Day. Our middle and high school students study native cultures and communities in their social studies and English language arts classes. We have a thriving Native American community in District 196 with over 500 indigenous students across the district, representing 55 different sovereign nations. The majority of our students are Ojibwe and Dakota Lakota, and our American Indian Education Program is hosting an event at Falcon Ridge from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. on Monday, October 14th. You can learn about our American Indian Education Program by attending or by going to the academic section of our district website at district196.org. Lastly, I want to also recognize and welcome our many speakers tonight who have submitted requests for special communications to the school board. We will hear from two different parties, those interested in a Spanish language immersion program, and a group who supports and values some of our employees, specifically our cultural family advocates. I want to thank all of you for the time and the passion you are sharing with the board. We also received a group of letters from elementary students about their interest in Spanish language learning. We appreciate the excitement and the advocacy, and I know that Mr. Sorenson also met our Director of Elementary. Mr. Sorenson met with the group last week regarding the Spanish language learning requests, and I'm sure there will be more meetings and discussions to come. For those speaking on behalf of our cultural family advocates, we value the important work they do. I know they've been in extensive conversations with our HR, Human Resources Team regarding collective bargaining, and I'm confident that those conversations will continue through to resolution. Please know that our district values their work and the positive impact they have on students and families. CFAs, you are appreciated. We are fortunate to live in a, thank you, yes. We are fortunate to live in a community that is actively involved in support of our schools as we work through the many opportunities and challenges before us. Thank you, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent Bolsoni. As we do the little mic switch here. Here we go. Next on our agenda is special communication requests. We have nine special communication requests this evening. People who would like to speak during special communication requests must submit a form at least five working days in advance of the meeting. Ten speakers receive up to four minutes to share comments. We do use a timer for public comment, and we'll remind speaker when they have 30 seconds remaining. For our speakers, there is a little light at the podium that will turn green when your time is started. It will turn amber when you have about 30 seconds remaining, and it will turn red and start making a beep-y sound when it's time to wrap up your comments, and I'll try to cut off the beeping before it gets too annoying. As a reminder, board members generally do not respond to special communication requests at the board meeting, because this is time for board members to listen and absorb what's being said, not necessarily for a dialogue in this venue. That said, members of the district administration or the board may follow up with individual speakers after the board meeting. With that, I would like to welcome our first speaker for tonight to the podium, Ms. Claire Upsal. And if you could please start just by introducing yourself and your connection to the district, and I'll start your time after that.
Introduce her. Go ahead. Hello, my name is Claire Upsal, and I am a resident of ISD 196. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, super, school board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. My name is Claire Upsal. I attended ISD 196 schools for the entirety of my K-12 education, starting at Woodland, transitioning Dakota Hills, and then graduating from Egan High School. When I finished earning my social studies teaching degree, I knew I wanted to come back to my old school district to teach. I wanted to be a part of a district that had done so much for me. I have been lucky enough to teach at Apple Valley High School for the last 12 years, and to have been a resident of this district for the last two years. Lastly, and most importantly, I am a mom of two little boys, ages three and one. Both of my boys attend a Spanish immersion daycare within the district boundaries. My oldest has been in daycare for almost a year now, and watching the progression of his language acquisition has been beyond incredible. He has grown more and more comfortable speaking Spanish words, and it has become a common occurrence in our household for him to ask, "How do you say [blank?" in Spanish. He is so curious and eager to learn. You can see him radiate all over his little body. I do not want this to stop when he leaves daycare. You see, there is nowhere in our district for my sons to go to continue their Spanish immersion education. immersion education. While Diamond Path does offer Spanish, it is only for an average of 16 minutes a day. That program simply does not compare to what a Spanish immersion program can offer students. When parents ask the daycare directors where they can go to continue Spanish immersion for their children, they are informed that they will need to leave the district since there is no Spanish immersion program in ISD 196. Several parents have already done this, which you can see in the comments section of the petition that has been shared. I am not the only parent who feels this way. There are 400 children, ages six months to five years, who are currently enrolled across the four Spanish immersion daycare centers within the ISD 196 boundaries, not to mention the hundreds of students who have already graduated from these daycare centers. These parents have chosen Spanish immersion daycares as a place to care, nurture, and educate their children because they acknowledge and value what bilingualism can offer their children and their future opportunities for academics, careers, and creating connections within their communities. The parents of these children are not the only people who value Spanish immersion. A petition was started one month ago, asking residents of ISD 196 to show their support for the creation of a Spanish immersion program by our school board of ISD 196. In one month alone, the petition has garnered 305 signatures. It is clear that our community values Spanish immersion and believes that it has a place in our school district. ISD 196's mission statement is to educate, develop, and inspire students for lifelong success. Increasing the number of bilingual students in this district would absolutely achieve this mission. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Drew Ingleson. And sir, similarly, if you could just start by introducing yourself and connection to the district.
Of course. So my name is Drew Ingleson. I'm an ISD 196 resident. Good evening, Chair, Superintendent Bolzoni, and school board members. In addition to me, I'm a parent of two young boys, and fun fact, my previous speaker is my wife, Claire. Tonight, I want to talk a little bit about bringing Spanish to ISD 196. I plan on covering a couple of different topics. These include why our children are currently learning Spanish, reasons why ISD 196 should consider curating a program, and also available resources. First off, I'll start off a little bit more about me. I'm of Latin heritage, however, I'm not a fluent Spanish speaker. My grandparents both were Spanish as a first language, and however, unfortunately, their language is not passed down to my mom, myself, or to my sister. They grew up in a time where there really was a strong, there wasn't a strong value for having those dual languages, so as part of that, it just wasn't something that they really saw as an important value for my mom to carry on. So, this is really a large part of why we've been looking at this program too, and we brought our kids into Spanish immersion, because we wanted them to really learn more about their language, learn more about their culture. So we've had them and put them into a Spanish immersion daycare. So, really looking at this and having our boys in Spanish, it's a really, to learn Spanish, it's obvious this is really a big personal thing to our family. We want them to be on this journey of learning more about their culture, learning about their language, and something that actually part of our family has already started doing. So, our niece and nephew, they started their Spanish education by attending a Spanish immersion daycare, similar to what our boys are doing, and they continue that on from their Spanish immersion daycare to going to Emerson Elementary School in Minneapolis. That's another Spanish immersion school that's, again, in Minneapolis that they've been going to, to continue that education. We'd love for our boys to have a similar experience in ISD 196, but unfortunately, it's currently not there and not available. So that's why we're speaking on this tonight. Our family is really just one story of how Spanish is really important to a lot of people. There are several other unique stories that we have learned about through our community outreach and that petition that we started, and we urge the school boards to review those comments in that petition if you haven't already, because there's really some rich conversations in there and stories about why people find Spanish to be really important. So, next I want to talk about several reasons why ISD 196 should consider creating a Spanish immersion program. Claire and I, and other members of our group, have spoken about these reasons at four ISD 196 community listening sessions over the past two years. So these statistics may be something that you've already heard before, but I'm gonna bring them up again. So first off, I'm gonna cover community need. There's a community need for Spanish immersion. There's 2,000 students in ISD 196 living in a household that speaks Spanish as their first language. Beyond that, if you're looking at that, 7.2% of all enrolled students. That is over twice the amount as the next language, which is Somali. This percentage is really hard to imagine, so think of it as two students in every classroom. While they have a different story from our own, these students would greatly benefit from a language immersion program. Another speaker tonight is gonna talk more about that, and will share really how that can really enrich their education. Two is existing programs. Language immersion programs have become rather common in Minnesota. There are 110 language immersion programs in the state, with Spanish being the most common program. There are Spanish immersion programs as nearby as Prior Lake, St. Paul, and Minneapolis, and Richfield. ISD 196 is an amazing school district. It's part of the reason why we moved here. However, that doesn't mean there aren't areas for improvement. Resources, we talked a little bit, I heard the superintendent talk about this before. We've sent a lot of information over to district office staff to let them know there is things available to learn more, workshops, conferences, and even staff contacts at Minnesota Department of Education. In addition to that, we're always open for more conversations, share any of the resources we can with the school board and with the district office staff. So, in summary, creating a Spanish immersion program will create equitable learning opportunities and keep our school district competitive. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate any more conversations we can have on the topic. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Gabriel Longren. And similar, sir, if you could start by introducing yourself and connection to the district.
Hi, I'm Gabriel Longren, and I'm a student at Apple Valley High School. Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Bolzoni. My name is Gabriel Longren, and I, and I'm a, currently a senior at Apple Valley High School. I graduated from a Chinese middle school four years ago, and I'm here to explain my immersion experience and to help advocate for implementing a Spanish immersion school in District 196. I have two main points I'd like to talk about, the first being the positive impact having the immersion, going to an immersion school had on me. As a little bit of background information, I was born in China and adopted by a white family at the age of three. Thus, I would not have much Chinese in me to begin with, and thankfully, I was sent to a Chinese immersion school in, called Ingua Academy, so I could keep a little bit of my culture with me. So it means a lot to me. I also believe that it's important for Americans of other cultures to go into an immersion school to be culturally aware of other people, and, ooh, I lost my spot. Culturally aware of others as well. Being immersion, being in immersion also provided me with the, with the ability to read, write, and understand Chinese, which has helped me not only understand my own language, but also cognitively benefit me as well. That, this skill allows me to have more opportunities in my career field and can give many others who have been in an immersion program those same benefits as well. I believe that being bilingual has not only helped me, helped my social skills, but also many cognitive capabilities as well. For example, my creativity, my memory, attention span, and it's also made me more self-reliant since I can't go to my parents for helping, for help with my Chinese homework. And, and my basic educational needs were not hindered in my immersion school either. I learned the basic elementary school to middle school curriculum while also having a very helpful skill that'll help me in the future. The second thing I would like to make clear is about the commute I had to take to go to my middle school. So Ingua Academy is a Chinese immersion school that's located in north Minneapolis. That means I didn't have a bus to take me there since I was based out here in Apple Valley, and that means my parents had to drive me. So on a good day, it would take about 45 minutes to get there, and on the way back, about an hour to drive back because of traffic. And because of that, my immersion school, oh, sorry, my immersion school went from kindergarten to eighth grade, so that school trip, so I went to school there for about nine years of my life, and as you can tell, going there for five days a week for nine years is very taxing on not only my parents' finances, but also I sometimes think that it made my dad a little bit insane driving there back and forth a lot. Now, I come from a well-off family, so it didn't really have any negative impacts, but some families here are as fortunate as some of us here, and that amount of driving cannot only be good for their monthly finance, cannot be good for their monthly finances. Adding the school closer in range to many families looking for their children to take Spanish immersion would not only help remove the need to drive them to a farther school, it would also help them learn Spanish faster, since younger children learn languages quicker than a fully developed adult can. I hope my words have made an impact on your decision, and I thank you for your time in listening to my story.
I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Sarah Scudder. And similar, ma'am, if you could start by just introducing yourself and connection to the district.
My name is Sarah Scudder, and I'm a resident of 196. Good evening. Thank you for your time and service to District 196. My name is Sarah Scudder, and I am thrilled to be a new physical therapist in District 196 and a mom to two little girls who will soon be a part of this amazing district. I'm here tonight, along with others, to passionately advocate for a Spanish immersion program in 196. I've had countless conversations with students, parents, and teachers who are all excited about the prospect of a Spanish immersion program. Let's work together to make this happen and provide an incredible opportunity for our students. When my child was first an infant, I looked into Spanish immersion programs but was surprised to find that there were no options within the district. Despite the district's great educational system, I discovered that most families seeking dual-language education were going to other cities. There are Spanish immersion daycares nearby, but no opportunities for continued immersion in the district. My personal story is growing up in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. I was very studious and A student, and I didn't take Spanish until later in high school for three years. I even took a proficiency test and got credit into college because I was a good memorizer and I knew enough to get by. But right now, in my daily professional career, I don't have anything to show for it. My experience is that it was hard to learn this at a later time in my academic career, and the missing piece was not being immersed in it. It just didn't stick, and it's one of the biggest regrets I have today. At an early age, children have the remarkable ability to learn and absorb a great deal of information due to their increased neuroplasticity. Starting language immersion early helps children attain native language proficiently. Research at Cornell University shows that learning a second language does not cause confusion, delay, or cognitive deficit. Children in immersion programs perform well in standardized tests and maintain attention better. Before my recent move to District 196, I worked at Shriners Healthcare for Children, where I treated a variety of children as a physical therapist. Over 75% of my caseload was Spanish-speaking patients. I heavily relied on in-person or remote interpreters, and without them, I couldn't do my job effectively. Having the ability to speak Spanish would not only benefit many families, but would also help me establish even deeper connections through language. A shared language helps build trust. I had a conversation with a Spanish-speaking mother in District 196 whose child was being bullied because of his English accent. As a result, he stopped speaking at school for over a year. I believe that incorporating a Spanish immersion program could help students like him feel proud of their language and culture. This program could also be expanded to include a mentorship component where students can build relationships across cultures. District 196 aims to educate, develop, and inspire students for lifelong learning. A Spanish immersion program aligns with our missions and beliefs, emphasizing inclusive learning and innovation. From my own experience, I know that being bilingual can open up many opportunities to various fields, especially since Spanish is one of the most widely spoken languages globally. I've heard the main reason a Spanish immersion program isn't, hasn't been implemented is the district, in the district, due to perceived lack of demand. However, considering that 65% of the dual-language programs in Minnesota are Spanish immersion, it's clear that there is indeed demand. Many of these programs have either a lottery system or a waiting list for enrollment. Could you provide us with some specific number of signatures required to demonstrate demand or suggest other ways to show the demand so we can address this issue? I'm excited to learn and look forward to this being the beginning stages of collaborating to develop Spanish immersion to enhance learning, empower change, build community, and serve our students. Thank you for your time.
I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Jay Cody. And please correct me if I mispronounced your name as well.
Sure. I'm Jay Cody. I am a language teacher at Apple Valley High School. I'm also a district resident, and I am the parent of two District 196 students, one at Blackhawk and one at Glacier Hills. Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolzoni, and board members, I am here today asking the board to consider creating a Spanish dual-immersion option for elementary students in our district. This is a program where approximately equal numbers of Spanish-speaking students and students learning Spanish are together in a classroom where instruction takes place half in English and half in Spanish. In this way, all students are able to develop academic language and interpersonal skills in both languages. Multiple research studies have found this system to lead to the greatest academic success for Spanish-speaking students. In dual-immersion programs, these students are in schools where the knowledge and skills they bring to the classroom are both implicitly and explicitly valued by the community, and they are supported in becoming literate in both Spanish and English. The Spanish learners in the classroom are able to achieve content knowledge at or above grade level while also becoming proficient in Spanish and attaining greater cultural competency. Many of the problems that our graduates will face are global in nature, and the ability to understand different cultural perspectives is key to understanding problems and making solutions that will actually work. When I think about what I want for my own children, as well as my students, and all of the students of 196, it is for them to leave here with the ability, desire, and determination to improve their communities, and I think immersion education will help them get there. As the other speakers have mentioned, there is a strong demand within and around our district for immersion. Anecdotally, before my son started kindergarten, I was working at Apple Valley and living in Robinsdale, basically the similar commute that Gabe was talking about. We applied to the immersion program in Robinsdale, and we ended up 107 on the waiting list. That was basically the catalyst to move so that my kids could attend school in district where I was working. But if he had gotten in, the immersion would have been a really strong incentive to try and stay and make it work. Considering the many offerings of 196 and our desire to provide equitable education with the best positive impact on our students' trajectory for all of our students, a Spanish immersion program seems like the next step in a district with over 2,000 students who speak Spanish at home. As we consider changing boundaries for elementary schools, I hope the possibility of adding Spanish immersion as an option for families in our community is part of the conversation. I student-taught at the German immersion school in St. Paul. I also did my master's degree research on beginning immersion teachers and have a graduate certificate in immersion. I have spent a lot of time in immersion classrooms. I have immersion graduates in my German classes. I take students to the zoo once a year for German Day at the Zoo, and my Level III students, who have been taking German for three years at the high school level, go around, and the fourth graders from the German immersion school are there presenting, and they are so confident and so fluent, and my kids are always asking me, like, "Where did those kids come from? Are they like a bunch of German kids running around?" And I explain to them the kind of education that those students received, that in one year of kindergarten, they've had more contact time with German and more German instruction than my kids get through taking college in the school's level German. And every year, there are many kids in my room who said, "Why didn't we have that opportunity? That's so cool." And while it's too late for my own children, I am hopeful that this becomes a possibility for District 196 students in the future. Thank you for listening and for supporting our community by serving on the board.
I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Jennifer A. Ernst. And similar, if you could start by introducing yourself and connection to the district.
Sure. Good evening. I'm Jennifer Ernst, and I'm a district resident. Not only am I a district resident, I'm a Rosemont High School graduate, a parent of a student from District 196, and I'm a cultural family advocate in District 196. And this evening, I'm just here to share a little bit of my why. I love my job. I love the families that I serve. I love supporting students and creating welcoming spaces, sharing school resources, and solving problems. I love District 196 and the work that we do as and the work that we do as cultural family advocates is essential for students and families of color in this district. I graduated from Rosemont High School, and when I was a student from Diamond Path to Scott Highlands to Rosemont, I was one of the only students of color. I never encountered a teacher or an administrator that looked like I did. Since I graduated, our students' demographics have changed dras- drastically. They've changed drastically since I was in school. Those students deserve to have some cultural-specific support. When you've been through these experiences yourself, you can help those students go through the challenging times they may face being the only student of color. And I'm excited that our district has more students of color than when I was a student. I'm passionate about helping District 196 students and families be successful. The data is clear. Students who have an educator who look like them are more likely to be successful. Students don't understand that there's a place for them in power or leadership, and we show that to them every day. All of the cultural family advocates feel this way. We make school less daunting, more accepting, more tolerant of language and cultural differences, and more effective for students of color. Because of cultural family advocates, you see a more stable, happy, diverse student body. Because of cultural family advocates, you see more engaged families of color in school events and functions that have been traditionally white spaces. Because of cultural family advocates, our students of color can overcome the harsh racial disparities that we see across our state. Cultural family advocates help remove those barriers so that every student in our district has an opportunity and the resources to thrive, both in and out of the classroom. We are that bridge for students, families, and schools. We're a safe place for parents. Parents reach out to us when, because they understand, we understand their culture and their cultural background. If there's something parents don't understand or a concern that parents have, we're usually their first stop. We work tirelessly to build trusting relationships with parents, and these relationships allow our families to engage in school activities that would be inaccessible without the work that we do. We're also a safe place for students. They see us. We look like them. And we develop a sense of trust because they see themselves reflected in us. While I had many amazing educators in 196, none of those educators looked like me. I see I'm running short on time, but I just would like the district to understand the role that we play as cultural family advocates in this school district is essential. It would have made a difference in my education, and I hope that I'm making a difference in the students of color in this district's education, too. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Becky Bunkhold. And similar ma'am, if you could start by introducing yourself and connection to the district.
Good evening, school board, superintendent. My name is Becky Bunkhold, and I'm a former alumni and parent of two biracial children who graduated from District 196. It has been brought to my attention that there are negotiations taking place in regard to the fair pay that the cultural family advocates of District 196 wholeheartedly deserve. It pains me to think this should even be up for debate. However, I was inclined to speak tonight on their behalf based on the much-needed support I have received for both of my children throughout their schooling. I have had a cultural family advocate follow both of my children K through 12. I can guarantee you that without a CFA in place, neither of my children would have graduated high school. Just a backstory. I graduated for myself from Rosemont High School in 1994. My daughter graduated in 2015, and now my son just graduated in 2024. When I was in school, there was maybe 1% minority population at my school. I can count on one, maybe two hands, the total number of kids of color in my school compared to now, where I don't know what the actual percentage is, but something like 67% or more are children of color at Apple Valley High School. Representation matters. Both of my kids have struggled with identity issues being biracial, especially in school. My son has had an IEP since he was in the first grade. He has struggled with his identity as well as many learning challenges. My son having had dyslexia, dysgraphia, and dyscalculia, basically reading, writing, and math, challenges caused many issues. Needless to say, school was not his friend. He hated school because of these challenges, but never wanted to ask for help. That being said, having had these challenges led to oppositional defiant behaviors in school. Schools was by far his biggest struggle. He went from being kicked out of elementary school to being sent to a Level III school where he was the only child of color in his class. I've had a District 196 CFA follow my son to be part of every meeting, every suspension, every IEP meeting since the first grade. My son knew that he was, that was the one person that he could meet him where he was at. The level of communication my CFA was able to provide and the ability to advocate and provide insight into school personnel was life-changing as he was transferred to three different elementary schools, Apple Valley Middle School and ending with Apple Valley High School. I can honestly say that my son would have not made it through school if it wasn't for a CFA. I'm going to be honest, my son wouldn't listen to white teachers. He had been singled out many times by certain teachers to where he did feel like he was being treated differently. Every little thing was a big thing. My son was suspended probably 30 times from elementary through high school. He had already been labeled. If I did not have a CFA that advocated for my son, I can assure you, he would have been another statistic. My point being is that you can't put a price on what these teachers do. To not offer them fair contracts and proper funding is morally wrong. These advocates provide what many teachers are unable to do. They are able to reach the kids of color, which is now in some and the majority of the District 196 schools. The representation that they provide in these schools are nowhere where they need to be and to not be acknowledged for what they do and the impact that they have on District 196 students is disheartening. They are just asking for fair pay, and they deserve that and more. My hope is that the school board acknowledges that CFAs make a substantial impact to not just students of color, but all students and families in the district. I would like the school board to acknowledge the necessity of CFAs. My hope is that the administration implements the financial support to build and maintain a strong CFA team for the betterment of the district, students, and families. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our next speaker to the podium, Tuee Jones. And similar ma'am, if you could start by introducing yourself and connection to the district.
All right. So my name is Tuee Jones. I am a Apple Valley High School alumni. I am also a former staff for the district, and I am a mother of three boys who attends Cedar Park Elementary, or Magnet. I'm going to move this here. Okay. So I am also a former wife of a cultural family advocate, or a former cultural, yeah, I'm still his wife, I promise. But he was a cultural family advocate here. I've had the privilege of seeing the impact of family advocates in many roles within our district. And I'm here to share why I believe they are so essential to the success of our students and community. Throughout my speech, I hope to show you just how valuable our CFAs are and to urge you to consider giving them a well-deserved contract that reflects the economic realities and the changing costs of health insurance. I loved watching my husband be a CFA. It was very purposeful and impactful. And I saw many highs and I saw many lows. And essentially, at the end of the day, the work was very hard. I saw my husband help students fill out FAFSA's. FAFSA's. I saw my husband advocate with police on behalf of the district for our students. I saw my husband organize, help students organize demonstration because they were like, we're finna leave. And he was like, no, don't just leave. There's a way that you can actually share your voice, be heard, and then not get in trouble for it, for all the times that they felt like they were just, they were being not served justly. And I watched my husband hold hard conversations between adults and students who have very much been harmed by these adults. But like I said, there were a lot of highs, like really, really good highs, for the love and, for the love of their students and the relationships that they built. I actually reached out to a couple of students, and here are just testimonies of their words of why they feel like CFAs are so valuable. Having a CFA was valuable because I could relate to JD. He didn't speak down to me and understood my living situation. My mom was sick and leaving a violent relationship, so I missed school to help with my siblings. JD helped me stay organized, gave me resources, and kept me on track with my credits. I actually graduated on time because he sat me down, told me what I was missing, and we created a plan for me to catch up. Kia, Apple Valley High School, 2017 alumni. JD created a relationship role in my life and helped me understand what it looked like to buckle down and look at the bigger picture. Coming from a broken home, you lose a lot of confidence, respect, and hope. CFAs allow new relationships to be built and help create opportunities within people who didn't believe exist. I know I'm not the only student from the district that benefits from CFAs. Dennis, Apple Valley High School, 2015 alumni. The role of our CFAs is to help close the achievement gap. It is obvious with these two testimonies that these kids would have fallen through the cracks without our CFAs. This is two students, one advocate, one school, only a couple years in between. Imagine how many more lives have been impacted by our CFAs today. Even me, right now, as a parent who is very well-versed in the school along with my husband, we still call on our CFAs to help us navigate through situations and understand different things. What makes them valuable is that they represent the district, which positions them to build trust with students, schools, families, and all other involved in the student's life. With limited time, I want to highlight two key aspects of family advocates that set them apart from other position. The trust they're able to build and their lived experiences. Trust is built through connection and sense of safety, and CFAs uniquely foster both, creating a much stronger sense of security for our students and our families. Lived experience are valuable because they bring authority and insight to real-life challenges, leading to more informed decisions and efficient solutions. In closing, I want to emphasize that CFAs are more than just staff members. They are vital bridges of trust and understanding between students, families, and the district. Their lived experience allow them to connect in ways that other positions simply cannot, providing critical support that helps students overcome obstacles and succeed. By investing in our CFAs, we are investing in the future of our students and the strength of our community. I urge you to show your commitment to justice and equity by giving our CFAs the recognition they deserve, a contract that reflects their invaluable role in the current economic realities. Thank you.
I'd like to welcome our last speaker tonight to the podium, Kendra Kadoff. Again, please correct me if I, if I pronounced your last name wrong.
Good evening. Mr. Chair, fellow board members, and Superintendent Bolsoni. I'm hoping my voice carries me through tonight, so I apologize. My name is Kendra Kadoff, and I'm a teacher at Valley Middle School of STEM. I'm here today to stand in solidarity with the District 196's cultural family advocates as they fight for a fair contract. These are incredible educators of color who help us do our jobs better, and they deserve more. When I came to this district three years ago, I left one that needed and wanted the resources to add CFAs to their staff. I love District 196 because of the programs and resources they utilize to ensure that all of our students thrive. And CFAs are a huge part of that. I personally experienced critical support from our CFAs in working with families in situations that culturally might have been challenging to navigate, but instead were collaboratively solved with the well-informed decisions and resources shared. As a teacher, I have benefited from their guidance with my teaching when I've sought it out to be culturally responsive. Because of the work of our CFAs, you see more engagement from families of color in school events and functions that have traditionally been white spaces. Our students of color can overcome those harsh racial disparities that we see across the state, doing well in classes and graduating with a bright future ahead of them. And District 196 students and families have access to more resources, one-on-one help, as described previously by our speakers, and career and life planning services and more. They have a promising future. And with an ever-growing diverse student body and resulting increased workload for each CFA, it's vitally important that we support them with a fair contract. We should support these dedicated people with the compensation that scales with inflation and covers healthcare increases. I cannot think of a more worthy area to invest in, and their ask is not unreasonable. Each of these 20 experienced and professional educators of color deserve a fair contract. Minnesota, as with the rest of the country, has had a history of creating environments in which students of color can face barriers to their success that the district-wide students do not. Our CFA team does an incredible job addressing those barriers that keep our students of color limited, and we are a better district for that. The District 196 mission statement declares the beliefs that guide the actions and decisions that take place. As a trained internal strategic plan facilitator, I know the time and work that goes into these strategic plans. I believe you meant it when you adopted this document as one based on shared beliefs of this board and the community. A few items listed in those beliefs are that students come first, that learning is maximized in a safe, respectful, and inclusive environment, that effective management of resources is critical, and partnerships and collaboration enhance educational programming. And lastly, an informed and engaged community guides effective decision-making. Now, in my view, from my perspective, the fair and deserved treatment of our CFAs and their work match those given beliefs. Their work is for the kids to come first. They do play a huge part of an inclusive and respectful environment. Using our district resources to retain and maintain them is critical. Their partnership and collaboration has been incredibly edifying for our district programming. And now, being informed with their invaluable worth, if you weren't before, your decision-making in this matter should be easy. Judging from the demonstrated merits and support that this group has received from various members of our community, it should not be difficult. I'm proud to stand in solidarity with our CFAs, and I thank you for your consideration and the essential work that you do as our school board.
Our next item of business tonight is the consent agenda. Board members, we have 17 items on our consent agenda tonight. Those items include the minutes of the September 23rd, 2024 regular school board meeting, gifts, treasures report for August 2024, summary of claims for August 2024, scheduled investments for August 2024, revenues and expenditures report for August 2024, personnel, agreement for student teaching with Hamlin University, agreement for student teaching with North Central University, assurance of compliance, bus purchase, New Rosemont Middle School bid pack number one, 2024-25, snow removal services, MSHSL, constitutional amendments, MSHSL, cooperative sponsorship, Nordic Ski, nutritional service, Employees Appreciation Week, October 14th through the 18th, 2024, and Transportation Employees Appreciation Week, October 25th, 21st through the 25th, 2024. Are there any items on the consent agenda that board members would like to remove today? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Sakoudin, second by Leah. All those in favor of approving the consent, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. Next on our agenda is, brings us to the report section. And I would like to welcome Jeremy Sorensen and Eric Hanson to the podium to give us a back-to-school update.
All right. Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni, and board members. Eric Hanson, our Director of Secondary Ed, and myself are here tonight to provide a back-to-school update. I forgot my glasses, but I'm going to get through this. All right. At the elementary level, our focus is on implementing new curriculum. I'd like to start by sincerely thanking our teachers. They are taking on a lot of new learning this year as we have new curriculum in our core areas at the elementary level. Literacy, math, and science. For literacy, we have adopted state-approved curriculums through the Read Act, Functional Phonics, which is a foundational skills program, and EL Open Up, which is a content-based program that builds vocabulary, background knowledge, and writing skills. We've also adopted an updated math program called I Ready and a science curriculum called Amplify. These are considered core areas because these are the areas that are assessed by the state's standardized testing. the state standardized testing through the Minnesota Comprehensive Assessment, or MCAs. Both literacy and math are assessed grades three through five every year, and science is assessed in fifth grade. This has been the largest investment in updating our elementary curriculum in several years. It's the first time since 2010 we have updated our math curriculum, and the first time in 10 years we've updated our literacy curriculum. These new curriculums provide a significant shift in the daily routine and experience for both our teachers and students. In a structured literacy approach, instruction is explicit and follows a clear sequence from phonemic awareness to phonics, fluency, vocabulary, and comprehension. In contrast with the more flexible, student-led nature of balanced literacy, where teachers might guide students to infer or discover reading strategies on their own, this shifts to a more structured curriculum is similar in math and science as well. Teachers have been adopting a consistent, daily routine for teaching foundational skills like phonics and decoding. This means teachers will spend less time planning for a workshop model and more time using proven, research-based methods. These curriculums provide teachers with clearer expectations and measurable goals, such as ensuring all students reach specific decoding milestones. Students will benefit from building stronger foundational skills, which are crucial for long-term success. As we move through the year, we will gather feedback and adjust accordingly. We know it's been a heavy lift for our elementary teachers. We're excited to monitor student progress and looking forward to celebrating the hard work our teachers are putting in on learning and implementing these new materials.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni, and members of the school board. As many of us know, entering a new school year is exciting, rejuvenating, and full of new hope. Seeing our students and families back in the school each year is like a reunion in the fall. Our fall arts activities are in full swing as our students prepare for choir concerts, participate in marching band performances, fall plays, dance line performances, and so much more. Our fall athletics are competing and practicing just about every night. In the last two weeks, we had four homecoming football games and festivities, volleyball matches, soccer games, swim meets, cross-country competitions, and tennis matches. Although we've had a few weather-related delays, for the most part, we've been fortunate to have a very pleasant fall for our outdoor competitions. Moving our focus to the classroom and academics as our secondary schools continue to focus on providing a well-balanced education for all our students. Our middle school students are in their second, our middle schools are in their second year with aligned expectations with student cellphone use. Middle school students and families have been communicated that student cellphones should be off and away during the school day. Families that need to get a hold of their student during the school day are encouraged to call the main office, and the student will be provided the message or put in contact with the family member. And likewise, students need to contact a parent can do so by using the school's student phone or school office phone. Our high schools are also aligned across our district with student cellphone expectations as well. When students enter a classroom or a learning environment, they simply place their cellphone in an assigned sleeve in the cellphone caddy. The slide showing right now shows students doing just that. A high school teacher recently said, "The students, after just a few days, have learned this routine and simply placed their phone in their designated sleeve." Another high school teacher reported to their administration, "I saw 160 seniors yesterday, and all the students put their cellphones in the caddy every hour, all hour long, and not a single complaint." Now, I recognize that not every student is in full support of what we're doing with cellphones. We believe that the consistent effort across our buildings, though, will increase classroom engagement and create stronger relationships within our schools and our community. Lastly, and another area of focus with our secondary schools is on supporting our students consistently attending school. Consistently attending is defined by the Minnesota Department of Education as a student attending school more than 90% of the school days. Consistently attending school helps our students enjoy school more and feel connected to their school and classroom community. It also boosts academic performance and will enhance social skills. In 2022, 75.9% of our middle school students consistently attended, and this increased to 85.5% in the 2023 school year. For our high schools, our students who consistently attended went from 73% in 2022 up to 77.9% in 2023. Our goal in each of our buildings would have 90% of our students consistently attending. Our schools stand ready to support our students and families with consistent attendance. School support in attendance will include student check-ins, family check-ins, ideas to create connections to the school community, as well as listening to families and students to learn more about why it is that they are missing. Knowing why students are not attending on a regular basis helps our student, our school teams partner with students and families in creating specific plans for improved attendance. I do look forward to bringing more updated data around our student attendance as we progress through this school year. Are there any questions that you would like us to answer?
At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members. Do you mind if you have a question or comment? You're going to have to come up and come over on this side. Sakoudin?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and the report, just to give us an update how the back-to-school has started. One thing that you had mentioned was that social well-being and also well-being in general, social well-being and the checking. So that's something I'm looking forward, the reports. Just wanted to say, when would that be available or what is Snapchat in time? I mean, the data has been improving. I like it, just to see that every day counts, gets learned when they're at school, in classrooms. When would the updated data be available and what is preliminary data show as we started?
Yeah, so, good question in terms of regular check-ins. So first of all, we have these conversations about our data in our principal meetings, which we have once a month. But bringing it back to the board, we need enough days, I think, behind us from this year to have a baseline data to see how we're improving, but we do have plans for check-ins to make sure that we can present back on where we're at in our status.
First of all, thank you for that cellphone policy. I can verify from a recently graduated high school student that she was very resistant. She didn't feel it was fair, so she did all her homework and was doing well in school. And I explained to her that this is an everyone-or-no-one situation, and so you'll support your teacher and the new policy. And I'd love that you talked about the benefits of putting the cellphones away and what that is, building community, attention, all those great things. So thank you for sharing that. I'm always going to ask, can we disaggregate the information, especially in terms of achievement, with our marginalized identities and specifically the correlation between the two? So I don't know if you have that information yet. If you're working on it, that would be great.
So I can jump in on the academic piece, and I think Rachel's going to provide a little bit about our new assessment framework, FastBridge. But as we move through the year, we can disaggregate data through our FastBridge for academic and those kinds of things. It's a new tool that we just started last year, and we're learning to use it, but that's one of the areas that we'll be focusing on. So, great question, and we will be following up.
So I agree. Coming back with more specific data is important, and we can do that, so I appreciate that question. I also appreciate your support in terms of, as a parent with cellphones, I have two students as well, and it's not always easy to answer the why behind that, but certainly detailed data going forward and how it correlates to academics as well is important.
Other questions or comments from board members? Thank you very much for the update. All right, next, I'm going to welcome Jeremy Sorensen back to the podium to give us an update on the elementary attendance areas.
I'm just going to wait till I see the presentation up here before I get started. All right, we're ready to go here. So good evening again, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni, and board members. I'm here tonight to provide updates on the attendance area adjustment proposals that we presented on, on September 23rd. So just for some quick context, as a reminder, these are some of the main focuses we used when developing our proposal. First, we looked to maintain optimal school sizes and provide equitable experiences for students and staff by targeting the ideal student population range of 600 to 800 students per building. We're aiming to ensure consistent educational experience across the district. We're also looking to alleviate overcrowding in elementary schools. The schools we specifically were looking at were Eastlake Elementary and Rosemont Elementary in these cases. And then lastly, we're looking to create more space for expanding early learning programming to ensure that our facilities can continue to meet the needs of all students from early childhood through elementary education. All right, so the slide up here I have says common questions for Zone 1. So so far, we've received about 186 questions or comments related to the attendance area proposals for Zone 1 and Zone 2, and there are some clear themes within the questions and comments. Here, we're talking about Zone 1, so creating boundaries for the new elementary building and alleviating overcrowding at Rosemont Elementary. A theme for Zone 1 has been, why isn't my neighborhood included in the attendance area of the new building? So we looked at a variety of possibilities. Our software shows us through pin maps of students that this area is a very densely populated area. So taking any sort of neighborhood or section in that area involves moving a lot of students. Right now, about 2/3 of the population of the new building were taken from the existing Rosemont Elementary attendance areas. As part of this process, we use our guiding principles to develop natural boundaries and roadways for transportation. Adding additional neighborhoods to the attendance area for the new building would require us to remove other neighborhoods to keep us from overcrowding the new building. Another theme in Zone 1 was about families staying at their existing school. Families can apply through the intra-district transfer process. There would not be transportation provided, and acceptance would be based on available space. Our main goal here is to alleviate overcrowding at Rosemont Elementary while making room for future developments in this area. I will point out, and we'll communicate this broadly with our community, but we will see the apply-through inter-district transfer process. That starts October 7th, and the deadline is December 15th. So we're encouraging families, if they want to stay at their building, that's the process they would use, and we would go through our process based on, except on, on capacity. So this slide is still on, is talking about Zone 2. We put Eastlake questions on Zone 2. There were questions from all the schools, but the vast majority of our questions came from the Eastlake student population and families, which makes sense. We're alleviating overcrowding from Eastlake, so there was a lot of movement from that attendance area. So here, we're talking about Zone 2 and the rebalance of a number of our southern elementary schools, Eastlake, Diamond Path, Highland, and Shannon Park. Our goal here is to balance enrollment and alleviate overcrowding at Eastlake Elementary. A theme of questions and comments for Zone 2 was for students who are current third and fourth graders being able to finish their elementary time at their existing school. We are proposing a transition plan for our current third and fourth graders, who will be fourth and fifth graders next year, to allow them to stay at their existing schools if they wish to do so. This plan would impact Zone 2 only, where there are students who are moving from an existing school to another existing school. If a family with a current K through second-grade student wishes to stay in their current building, they may apply through the intra-district transfer process. Transportation would not be provided, and acceptance would be based on capacity. So I'm going to go back to the slide on the top there. For our current third and fourth graders, who would be fourth and fifth next year, we are proposing a transition or a transportation for two years. We can see the timelines up there. Again, we'll communicate this broadly to our community. The one thing that we'll see is we want families to apply through the intra-district transfer process, again, so we can keep track of who these families are, so we can get ourselves organized to help create bus routes and those kinds of things, and get a pulse on the number of students who are actually wanting to try to stay. So we're going to stay on Zone 2 because there was another set of questions, particularly at Diamond Path. So on this slide, we're talking specifically about Diamond Path Elementary. In our proposal, Diamond Path keeps its theme of international studies but moves away from its magnet designation, meaning we would move away from providing magnet transportation to Diamond Path. Questions and comments specific to Diamond Path are related to the ability to stay in the school because of their international studies theme. For Diamond Path, the transition process would be similar for the rest of Zone 2. We are proposing a transition plan for current third and fourth graders, who will be fourth and fifth grade next year, to allow them to stay at Diamond Path if they wish to do so. If a family with a current K through second grader wishes to stay at Diamond Path, they may apply through the intra-district transfer process. Transportation would not be provided, and acceptance would be based on capacity. So again, I'll point out this slide, we're asking families to fill out the intra-district transfer process so we can keep track of who wants to stay at their current building, and that there's timelines up there that the application process is due by December 15th. All right, moving on to some next steps. Our goal is to continue to gather feedback from families. We have four family information sessions scheduled through the month of October. Our first information session is tomorrow evening, Tuesday, October 8th, 6:00 p.m. at Rosemont Middle School. We also have family information sessions scheduled for Monday, October 14th, Monday, October 21st, and Monday, October 28th, where we use the feedback we gather to make any appropriate adjustments. We plan on bringing our final recommendations to the board in mid-November. For any families planning on applying for the intra-district transfer process, the deadline for those applications is December 15th, and the elementary magnet school application deadline is January 3rd. So we put those on there because they're upcoming deadlines. I will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members? I just had one quick question I was looking at. That December 15th deadline, is that our intra-district transfer deadline for all applications, regardless if they're affected at school or not, like our standard deadline?
Yes, that's our, that's our first deadline, and we use that deadline as a marker. People can still fill it out after that, but you kind of get on a waiting list after that. So we have that December 15th deadline there for all of our students.
Okay, got it. As you were talking, and I was thinking about that, it's good to know that people, if they submit it after, it'll be more like a waitlist, but it's not just an automatic no. I think that's important as well. As I was thinking through that, I'm going, that's only a month and a half or so away, and I still feel like the school year just started. I'm not thinking about next year as a parent.
It comes fast every year.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'd love to, that we're thinking about that, especially if some, some parents probably aren't ready to think about next year, and that will come really quick on them, so as long as we're still keeping that open, knowing that they pass that first deadline, but it's not an automatic no, just a little different process, so.
Yep.
Excellent, thank you. All right. Our next agenda item, I would like to welcome Rachel Hughes to the podium to go over our data-informed decision-making and FastBridge.
Thank you, Board Chair, Johnson, Superintendent Bolsoni, and other school board members. I'm Rachel Hughes, the new Director of Instruction and Achievement, and this is my first board report. Tonight, I'm going to provide an overview about our strategic priority achievement, strengthening and aligning curriculum and instructional practices across all classrooms to improve student outcomes. Tonight, I will introduce FastBridge, the screening tool we use and how it will shape our educational practices to better support students, teachers, and families. The use of FastBridge aligns our larger goal of becoming a more data-informed system. By collecting and analyzing data at multiple points during the year, we can make informed decisions at both the classroom and district level. This data will guide instructional planning, resource allocation, professional development, and ensuring that our practices are rooted in evidence and aimed at improving outcomes for all students. FastBridge is more than just an assessment tool. It is a vital component of our strategy to create a responsive, personalized, and effective learning environment for every student. By using this data in collaboration with families and across our system, we are taking important steps toward fulfilling our mission, educating our students for lifelong success. This fall, all students in kindergarten through sixth grade participated in a fall assessment using FastBridge. This has helped teachers understand how well students are learning important skills in reading and in math. It's like a checkup for learning, like if you went to the doctor and got a checkup. The screening data gives teachers a real-time understanding of each student's academic progress. It allows for quick identification of students who may be at risk of falling behind, enabling us to intervene early with intentional support. On the other hand, for students who are excelling, the data helps teachers to provide enrichment opportunities, ensuring their academic growth is nurtured. FastBridge scores help teachers to know what kind of teaching FastBridge scores help teachers to know what kind of teaching each student needs to help them grow, both individually and as part of a whole class. In addition, Minnesota state law requires us to screen students and share the results with families in literacy and math at least two times a year. In District one ninety-six, we screen students to monitor their progress three times a year, fall, winter, and spring. We believe the mid-year checkup provides another opportunity to answer the question, are students on track for their grade level? FastBridge measures how well students are doing in basic math and literacy skills. For math, it checks things like how well students are, can recognize and order numbers, add, subtract, multiply, and solve problems. It also looks at how quickly and correctly they can answer math questions. For literacy, FastBridge measures how well students can sound out letters and words, understand what they read, and how quickly they can read words and sentences. It's all about making sure students are on track with the skills they need to be successful. Teachers will use the data three times throughout the year. We just completed our first round of FastBridge, so teachers are using the data to determine how well students are doing in math and reading. This helps them understand which students might need extra help right away, which ones are on track to meet grade level expectations. During the winter check, teachers will look at the data to monitor the progress of each student. Teachers can then confidently continue successful instructional strategies while adjusting their approach for students who are not making progress, providing a more targeted support to meet their individual needs. The spring screening is a final check which demonstrates if students met grade level expectations. Teachers use this to see how well their teaching methods worked, and if, and to make sure students are prepared for what's next. So how will families use the screening data? They will use the screening data to gain information about their child's progress three times a year, during fall and winter conferences, and end-of-year report. They will receive detailed reports on their child's performance, showing areas of strength and any areas where additional support may be needed. A final, a final summary report will highlight the student's overall growth and readiness and expected performance on the MCAs. The screening data helps us partner with families to support each child's learning journey. On a broader scale, schools and district will use FastBridge data to look at how student groups are responding to our instructional system. For example, when data trends are observed, instructional practices can be assessed to determine whether additional professional development, coaching, or resources are needed to address any gaps. At the district level, FastBridge data gives us a bird's-eye view of how our schools are performing. This helps make informed decisions about where to allocate resources, whether it's offering more training for teachers, providing instructional materials, or supporting specific interventions that can help students. In short, FastBridge data helps everyone, teachers, schools, and the district, to make informed decisions to ensure all students have the best chance to succeed. When families attend conferences in November, they'll receive a FastBridge report, much like the one that you're seeing on the screen right now, that will show how their child is doing in reading and math. Here's how families can expect to see and understand these reports. First, families will see overview of skills. The report will show reading and math skills were tested, like reading speed, understanding, and basic math facts. Families will also see their child's score and how they compare to grade level expectations. This helps parents understand whether the child's on track, needs extra support, or is meeting grade level expectations in certain areas. Over time, we'll be able to show families how much project, progress the child has made from the first test to the most recent one. Families will see if their child is improving and by how much. During conferences, teachers will use the report to explain what they're doing to support the child's learning, whether it's giving them extra help in certain areas or continuing to challenge them. Families will get a clear picture of where their child is excelling and where they might need more support. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to share about FastBridge and how the data will be used to support student achievement. I look forward to bringing back the data to you in a work session and presenting an update to our community.
At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members. Yes, Anna?
I have one for Rachel. That was a question. I thought that was a goodbye. I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, so one question, how is this different from previous? This looks different from what my kids had. And so, how is it different? And then my next question is, just because we had CFAs, CFAs here, and they were talking about how much they support students, I'm curious where the CFAs fit in as part of this process in terms of knowing the students' opportunities are and where they get engaged at what time in, in that piece.
Yeah, great questions. I want to make sure I heard your first one.
Sorry. How is this different from previous assessments that we did? FastBridge is new, I'm understanding, so there must be some improvements, and so what are those improvements?
Absolutely.
And then the second was about the CFAs.
Yeah. So the first exciting thing is that FastBridge is a nationally normed test.
Okay.
So it's normed data. It's a quick data point, so we can really get a pulse on where our students are at. Whereas before, we did the BASS, which took us, probably teaches about ten to twelve hours to complete, we now can complete this pretty quickly and really get a pulse on how our students are doing, how our schools are doing, and what we can do to intervene. So it does look a little bit differently, and that's why we're excited to share these reports with families in November.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, it's much more efficient?
Absolutely.
And probably accurate?
And more accurate.
Okay.
Normed data, yep.
Love that. Thank you for sharing those benefits of this.
Yes.
I would love to see, anytime we do something that's new, what are those benefits?
Absolutely. I'm excited to share more about that at a board session with you, so I can answer some of those questions. But it is definitely more specific and really intentional. We can disaggregate it in lots of different ways, whether it's by a classroom, by a group of students, individual students, and then that's where maybe CFAs kind of loop in, is when we can really look at where individual students are doing and what their progress looks like. Where can we intervene and support them as we're looking at the different data points throughout the whole school year?
Fantastic, thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none? Great first board presentation, it won't be the last, though. Next, I'd like to welcome Dani Duchene to the podium to go over our official October enrollment.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Bosoni, members of the school board and our District one ninety-six community. My name is Dani Duchene, Coordinator of Finance for District one ninety-six, and tonight, I am pleased to present the district's official October first, twenty-twenty-four enrollment report for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Before we dive into the actual enrollment data, there are a few anecdotes I'd like to share that provide some important context regarding the data you're about to see. A quick thank you to our student information systems teams, our school registrars, and members of the special education department who helped review the data, pull the information, scrub the data, and make sure all of our kids are accounted for in the correct school and in the correct programs. The October first enrollment report is one of the first enrollment data points required by M D E each school year. The October first enrollment data presented here tonight is a head count of students enrolled in the district as of October first. It's really critical to stress that the head count enrollment that is getting presented here tonight is different than the district's ADM. Head count enrollment is a snapshot at a specific time, where ADM is based on a percentage of the entire school year in which a student is enrolled. While ADM data is the primary driver for most state funding formulas, the October first enrollment head count is used by M D E for some state funding calculations, compensatory funding being a primary example. Internally, our district utilizes this enrollment count to set our final budget allocations, which allows our budget administrators and principals to make adjustments to the preliminary budget for this current school year. The front page above the fold headline for the October first enrollment report is that the district experienced overall enrollment growth compared to both actual enrollment as of October second, twenty-twenty-three from last year, and enrollment growth over the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five enrollment projections approved by the school board in November of twenty-twenty-three. The content of the following slides and the exhibit included in tonight's board packets illustrate this increase. The district's official October first, twenty-twenty-four enrollment count is two, twenty-nine thousand forty-nine students. This first enrollment summary table compares actual enrollments for October first, twenty-twenty-four to October second, twenty-twenty-three. Just a quick side note, when October first falls on a Saturday or Sunday, our official enrollment gets pulled on Monday following the first, so either on October second or October third. Overall, the district experienced an eighty-eight student increase compared to similar data from one year ago. That eighty-eight student increase is comprised of a twelve-student decrease in our non-special education levels, and a hundred-student increase collectively within our center-based and early childhood special education programs. It's important to note that the enrollments counts included in this table do not include the Connections preschool accounts, as that program is primarily a fee-based program that does not generate state funding. One other footnote I'd like to call out is that the district does receive some state funding for, for a certain amount of seats in our VPK program. Currently, we receive state funding for seventy seats in that program, which has held that Echo Park and Oak Ridge Elementary have a hundred and four total participants. Now, we shift over from comparing actuals from last year to comparing against the projections that we approved in November of twenty-twenty-three to our current data. Last November, the school board approved a twenty-twenty-five enrollment, twenty-four, twenty-five enrollment projection of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and five. The October first, twenty-twenty-four enrollment count of twenty-nine thousand forty-nine students is two hundred and forty-four students higher than projections. This increase includes a collective hundred and sixty-seven student increase in the non-special education levels, and a seventy-seven student increase in the center-based and early childhood special education programs. These next couple of slides will show some varying visual representations of what's included in this October first, twenty-twenty-four enrollment count. From this pie chart, we can see that the elementary level makes up the largest share of enrollment at thirty-nine point six percent, with high school, the high school level following next at thirty-one point six percent. Our middle school level accounts for twenty-two percent, center-based special education at four point seven percent, and early childhood special education at two point zero percent. This next slide is just a visual representation of the different proportions at each level over the course of the last ten years. The one thing I'd like to call out on this particular slide is that even though the total enrollment may have adjusted over the course of the last ten years, if you look at the different, the proportions of each color in each year, they've stayed relatively flat, which is allowed, which has aided the district in performing enrollment projections, because we're not seeing big swings at any level from any given year. Looking at the same information in a little bit different way here on the next two slides. This line graph shows the trends for K through twelve non-special education enrollments for the past ten years at the elementary, middle school, and high school levels, starting in twenty-fifteen and concluding with the current report presented here tonight. Looking at the same ten years of enrollment history for our ECSC and center-based programs, there are two main data points that we need to call out from this particular slide. Our center-based special education enrollment has increased every single year for the last ten years, which is seen in that bottom-left to upper-right trend line on the blue line. Additionally, early childhood special education enrollment has rebounded to higher than pre-pandemic, pre-pandemic levels with growth each of the past three years. What's important about these last two slides is it allows us to have a wide view of the impacts of the pandemic. We can see enrollment counts from before the pandemic, during the pandemic, and now we're starting to see emerging, emerging enrollment counts post-pandemic to kind of get that full, clear picture. I mentioned earlier in this presentation that our October first enrollment count exceeded projections by two hundred and forty-four students. While enrollment projections were quite close in fiscal years twenty-three and twenty-four, that two hundred and forty-four student increase over projections for twenty-four, twenty-five is the first time in the last five years that enrollment has actually exceeded our projections for October first, which is great news to share. As we look at the students who make up our enrollment count, this chart shows the various racial and ethnic demographics for our October first report. Our stu, our district student demographics continue to become more diverse, with around fifty-five percent white students and forty-five percent students of color, which includes fourteen point eight percent black students, twelve point seven percent Hispanic students, seven point seven percent Asian students, and nine point two percent students who identify as multiple ethnicities. Additionally, American Indian students and Pacific Islander students account for point three six percent and point zero nine percent of our student body. If we look at a breakdown of our students of color at the three levels, we can see that each level has a very comparable percentage of students of color, so it's pretty consistent across the board. This is about seven percent higher than the state total from last year, using the Minnesota Report Card for twenty-two, twenty, or twenty-three, twenty-four data, and nearly fifteen percent higher than District one ninety-six from about ten years ago, data in twenty-three, twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen. Additionally, our October first enrollment count includes seven point seven percent of English learners. This percentage is slightly lower than what the state total was for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, according to the Minnesota Report Card, and about three point three percent higher than that same comparison data point from ten years ago in twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen within our district. At this time, I'd like to welcome Jennifer Emmon, Director of Special Education, to discuss our early childhood learning and center-based special education programs in more detail.
Thank you, Dani. So we want to take a little bit of more time to look more deeply into our early childhood special education and special education center-based enrollment, because as you heard from Dani, both are growing exponentially and have been for the past several years. Often, when we think about early, early childhood learning, we think about our preschool, early childhood family education programs, the programs you see on the slide in the blue. Both are fee-based, optional programs for families. They are not included in our enrollment reports because they are optional, fee-for-service programs. We often have waitlists, but those are not the programs that are causing concern. There are two additional programs that are included in our enrollment report, because they receive state and/or federal funding. That is our early childhood special education program and voluntary pre-K program. Growth in these programs have an immediate impact on space, because special education services typically have smaller student-to-staff ratios and require more square footage per child than general education classrooms. There are many mandates we have for special education services, but two I want to address tonight are the, one, the legal standard for providing, I, sorry, the legal standard for providing education in a least restrictive environment. In elementary, middle, or high schools, we may hear this referred to as mainstream or inclusion. The second legal standard is providing services from age birth through twenty-two. I'll speak to that requirement in a moment when we address our center-based programs. In June, we talked about the need for additional early childhood space, and it is largely because of growth in our early childhood special education enrollment. First, early childhood special education is a federally mandated program, servicing students identified with special education needs from birth through age five. In the early years, birth through age two, services are delivered at home in the student's natural environment alongside families. By age three, research is clear that children develop best when served in an inclusive setting, an early childhood classroom with like-aged peers. Learning alongside their preschool peers meets the legal definition for the least restrictive environment for learning. What this looks like is a classroom of sixteen preschoolers with eight general education preschoolers and eight special education preschoolers. We accomplish this by partnering with our Connections preschool. Our challenge is that with space at a premium, if our early childhood special education's numbers continue to grow as they have, we are legally obligated to provide their education. There are fewer spaces for general education preschoolers, and we are not able to provide an inclusive education. We are currently twenty-one section short in serving our general education preschool families, and we have classrooms of special education-only preschools, preschoolers in our elementary schools, serving them in small group, self-contained settings, which provides minimal opportunity for inclusion for these students. The next slide illustrates, illustrates the scale of the space problem we are trying to solve. As shown in the table, there has been significant growth in the number of students qualifying for early childhood special education services, as explained in our last slide, averaging about fifty percent per year the last three years. For example, we have forty-seven students who are currently in evaluation process right now, who are not yet included in our October one numbers for this this year. If these trends continue, June numbers will have doubled over the past four years. While we've always had a waitlist for general education preschool in early childhood, we've never seen this level of demand for special education services in early childhood. The need for additional space is no longer a question of if, it's a need we must address. The second area we have seen significant growth is with students serviced in center-based programs. Sorry. Center-based programs serve students who need to be in the special education classroom for more than 60% or more of their day. As shown in the table, there has been significant growth in the number of students educated in our center-based special education programs, particularly our programs that service students identified under the category of autism. With this growth of students, it is approximately 30 additional classroom spaces needed over the past four years, depending on the type of program we service, anywhere from six to 12 students in these classrooms. Students in center-based programs are our most vulnerable students. The type of needs we support include, but are not limited to, students using alternative modes of communication, students who are needing nursing support, students who had cognitive delays, and students who are not able to regulate their behavior in order to access their instruction in the general education classroom. Additional pressure for space is from a 2023 recent Minnesota law that had changed eligibility requirements for students with disabilities. In Minnesota, a free, appropriate public education to students with disabilities continues until they reach age 22, as opposed to the previous version of the law, which continued special education instruction and services until July 1st after the student with a disability reached 21 years old. This also requires the need for additional space. Now, I'm going to turn it back over to Dani to close the presentation.
Thank you, Director Fimmann. To close out our enrollment report, we look ahead at what's next, based on the enrollment data presented here tonight. First, all of our enrollment information is included in all of the budget books that we publish during each budget cycle. So if the board or the community wants to look at historical trends, data, enrollment information is included in all of those budget books. The final budget cycle for the 24-25 school year actually began today, and these October 1 enrollment counts have been utilized to update the allocations to all the schools. District budget administrators will be working over the next two months on the 24-25 final budget, which we will bring back to the board, presented in December and January. The October 1st, 2024 enrollment count will also be input as a variable in our enrollment projections model as we begin preparations for our official 25-26 enrollment projections. The enrollment projections model will also include variables such as boundary changes that were discussed once those are finalized for the new elementary school. That concludes our report, and at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions, if there are any.
Questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none. Questions from board members? But I did have one, just to clarify before I turn over to my fellow board members, if you don't mind. So Dani, when you presented the enrollment numbers, it showed a 10-student increase in our early childhood special ed. But when Janet did it, it showed a 54-student increase. Could you talk to a little bit about the numbers and why they're a little different?
Yeah, that can be confusing. So what we see in early childhood special ed is we take the October 1 counts, and there's always significant growth over the course of the school year, because we don't stop screening students. And as we screen students, those students, if they fail screening, continue to get referred for an evaluation potentially, and then they would qualify over the course of the year. So we always grow from October to June. Does that make sense?
It does, but the numbers I mentioned are the October 1 numbers.
We can, I can, we can dig into that a little bit more and follow up with you post-meeting.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So just to clarify your question, the October, the numbers on my slides were not the same. Is that what you're?
The numbers for October 1 enrollment on Slide 14 showed a 54-student increase, and the numbers for October 1 enrollment when Dani presented showed a 10-student increase.
Okay.
So just curious where the discrepancy is, since we can get a better picture of where the growth is at.
I have a hunch, but I'm not going to.
Perfect. Yeah, you definitely, if you can get back to us, totally fine. Don't expect you to have the answer, and I just noticed it while you're presenting, because they are so different, so.
Good question.
Other questions or comments from board members? Seeing none. Thank you very much. All right. That brings us to old business. I'd like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over Policy 101, District 196, Mission and Beliefs.
Good evening Chairperson Johnson, members of the board, and Superintendent Bolsoni. Before you tonight is old business, our administrative proposed changes, both to Policy 101, Mission and Beliefs, as well as Policy 201, General Organization. So these are simple changes tonight. They update the district's mission statement in both of the policies. And then with respect to Policy 101, they also add in some additional components of the district's strategic plan, specifically vision, values, and priorities. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have tonight. If not, this is a matter for your approval.
Tonight, I'm tonight, so before I go into questions, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Anna, is there a second? A second by Leah? At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members? Seems like a pretty straightforward second reading. Although, there's a motion to approve by Anna, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a 5-0 vote.
Thank you.
We have no items on new business, so that brings us to other action items, which is the process for filling school board vacancies. And I get to present this one tonight. So I'm just gonna stay here. All right. So the process for filling school board vacancies. So as you know, the school board received the resignation of Art Colson, effective August 31st, and Vice Chair Sachin Isaacs, effective at the end of this month, October 31st, which leaves us two different vacancies to fill. Under Minnesota statute, the vacancies must be filled by board appointment at a regular or special meeting, evidenced by resolution entered in the minutes. At the last board meeting, I talked a little bit about how we're thinking about filling it, and tonight I'm bringing you the plan and dates for board approval, so that we're all on the same page. The appointment is effective 30 days following adoption of the resolution, unless a valid petition to reject the appointee is filed with the school board clerk. Once effective, the appointment continues for the remainder of the unexpired term. In the case of Director Colson's seat, in the case of Vice Chair Isaac's seats, the appointment continues until a special election can be held for his unexpired term, and that's because they had different years remaining on their terms when they submitted their resignation. In the past, the school board followed an application to interview process when appointing an individual to fill a board vacancy, and I am recommending that we follow the same process this time, which is what we, this process mirrors pretty closely what we did when Bianca Vernig had a vacancy when she was elected to the House of Representatives. So November 13th is when the superintendent's office will make applications available to individuals interested. November 26th, at the end of day, will be the deadline to receive those applications. The board will have between, about two weeks, between November 26th and December 9th to review candidates, and then when proposing a special school board meeting on December 9th for the board to deliberate on which candidates we would like to bring in for an interview. On December 16th, we will actually interview those candidates at a public meeting and make our selection of the candidates we would like to fill, because there is that 30-day waiting period. Their appointment would be effective after 30 days, but they wouldn't take their oath of office until the February 10th meeting. So this is an action item tonight. So before I go into questions or comments, is there a motion to approve the process I laid out? Motion by Leah, is there a second? Second by Anna. At this time, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from board members? All right. Seeing no comments. Hopefully, it's a good process then. There is a motion to approve from Leah, seconded by Anna. All those in favor of approval, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. At this time, I will turn it over to Superintendent Bolsoni for superintendent updates.
Thank you Chair Johnson. I, as always, want to encourage all voters in District 196 who haven't already done so to participate in the school board election coming up here by first getting informed about the candidates and then voting. Absentee voting is open by mail and in person. Voters can also vote at their polling place on Election Day, Tuesday, November 5th. For more information on where to vote, the Secretary of State's website has that information at www.mn, like Minnesota, mnvotes.org, www.mnvotes.org. It's been busy in our communities and at our high schools, especially over the last two weeks. Four of our comprehensive high schools celebrated their homecomings, which really is a community celebration of pride in our schools. We want to thank everyone for participating in safe and fun celebrations, and we especially want to thank our law enforcement partners who helped us manage larger crowds, sometimes in the thousands, attending football games and the additional traffic due to those celebrations. Supporting our AAA philosophy, I want to invite community members to enjoy the following fine art events at our high schools. The Egan Play Clue has already wrapped up, but there are three more fall events you can attend. Apple Valley's Fall Musical Sister Act, October 31st through November 9th. Eastview, just this upcoming weekend here, has their fall play, the Ice Fishing Play, October 9th through the 12th. And this weekend also, at Rosemount, is the Curious Savage on October 10th through 11th. We also have choir concerts coming up on October 14th. Both Apple Valley and Eastview will be hosting choir concerts. On October 23rd, Rosemount, and on October 28th, Egan's Choir Concert. We also have band concerts as well, on October 29th at both Eastview and Rosemount. So please feel free to come out, and we'd love to see folks at those events. Lastly, as we enter this time of year when many businesses and organizations conduct their annual giving campaigns, I would like to let people know about the District 196 Foundation. Each year, funding from the District 196 Foundation provides direct support to hundreds of our students right here in District 196. Funding from the foundation provides students weekend food bags, books to read during the summer, and musical instruments for students who otherwise would not have been able to participate in band. If you would like to learn more about the District 196 Foundation or make a donation to support their efforts, go to the website, www.district196foundation.org. Thank you.
At this time, are there any school board members with items they'd like to share? Jackie?
It just breaks my heart that we are accepting Sachin's resignation to the board. I've worked with Sachin for the past several years, and Sachin is a man of grace and wisdom, and I would really like to thank him for sharing his heart, his wisdom, and his time with District 196. Sachin, my friend, you made a difference, and you will be missed.
Any other members, school board members with items they'd like to share? Seeing none. That brings us to our end of the agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? No one wants to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay, Anna? All right, is there a second? Second by Leah. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries on a 5-0 vote. We are adjourned. Our next regular meeting is Monday, November 4.